May I have a motion to approve the agenda? I move.
We gotta change the agenda.
Oh, right.
You can't do that.
We need to amend item 8A. So we're amending item 8A and voting separately, or...
We need to pull 8A.
Pull 8A, thank you. So as amended, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. And with that, we will convene to close session.
We will reconvene our meeting at 6:05 PM. There is no action taken in closed meetings, so we're on for the flag salute. Here we have Molly come forward.
Please stand for the pledge. It may begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Okay, next up is item 6A, introduction of Marguerite Hawn principal, Jen Hansen.
Good evening trustees. CRPUSD is excited to announce that Mrs. Nikki Diaz has been selected as our new principal for Marguerite Hawn Elementary School. A little bit very excited. A proud Sonoma County native, Mrs. Diaz was born, raised, and educated right here in our community. She attended Windsor Schools through high school and earned her Bachelor of Science degree in liberal studies from Sonoma State University. Mrs. Diaz also holds a multiple subject teaching credential and recently completed her Master's of Science degree in educational leadership, along with her administrative credential from Sonoma State. Mrs. Diaz brings a wealth of experience and a deep commitment to student learning. Throughout her career, she has taught a variety of grade levels, including second, fourth, and sixth in the communities of Ukiah, Cloverdale, and Roanoke Park. For the past nine years, Mrs. Diaz has been a dedicated fourth grade teacher at Hawn School, where she has also served as the school's teacher in charge. In that leadership role, she collaborated closely with the previous administration to support school-wide initiatives, including Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, PBIS, and the development of professional learning communities, PLCs. Mrs. Diaz lives in Roanoke Park with her husband and their two daughters, Olivia and Nora, both proud students at Hawn. As she steps into the role of principal, Mrs. Diaz is honored and enthusiastic. I'm thinking you're making me cry. She is honored and enthusiastic about continuing to serve the Hawn community in this new capacity. She is deeply committed to ensuring the success of every student and fostering a school culture where all learners feel valued, supported, and empowered to thrive. Please join us in welcoming Mrs. Nikki Diaz as principal of Marguerite Hawn Elementary School. Thank you, and I'm so excited for this opportunity. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I just want Jen's walking out, but I just wanted to say thank you to Jen Hansen for all her years of service and dedication to this district and all the hard work she's put forth in human resources and all the hiring and all the things that she's done to help us move forward. So thank you Jen, and we wish you all the best.
Next up, Monta Vista presentation, Courtney Morales-Rosen, please come up.
Hi everyone, thank you so much for having us. All right, good evening everyone. We're here to celebrate Monta Vista Safety Patrol. I've brought with me a few students to come share what it's all about and how we've continued to develop it at Monta Vista over the last year or so. So I'm going to pass it off to them.
Safety Patrol is a leadership program for fourth and fifth graders. We help make our schools safer by welcoming families, opening car doors, and helping during drop-off.
Every morning, we put on our yellow vests and stand at our stations. We help kids safely get out of their cars and remind them to use the sidewalk. Some of us also help in the crosswalk, are guiding younger students to their class lines. We help keep everything running safely and smoothly.
AAA or the American Automobile Association helps our Safety Patrol program by giving us training materials and safety gear like vests, belts, ponchos, and hats. They also offer grants to help cover the cost in next year. We'll even have a AAA representative to support our program.
About joining Safety Patrol. To join Safety Patrol, students fill out an application and write a short paragraph about why they want to join. Parents and teachers must approve, and then a school administrator gives a final okay. It's a great way to show you're responsible and ready to help.
Recruitment and training for 2025 and 2026. This year, we allowed third and fourth graders to apply in the spring in preparation for the next school year. They will be trained by current fifth grade safety patrolers. Training includes a video from AAA and a slide show of expectations and a special Safety Patrol manual. Everyone also gets safety gear and our safety supervisor and principals help us every step of the way.
Hot chocolate and feedback. Every Friday, we get together to have our hot chocolate. It's our time to reflect on how the week went and talk about everything we noticed or learned. We also use this time for extra training to give out shout-outs and to ask questions. It helps us stay connected and feel appreciated.
Hello. We also like to celebrate big accomplishments. The AAA Safety Patrol reward program is not simply a thank you, it is an investment. It recognizes the significant contribution of these young leaders by providing them with educational opportunities, scholarships, and recognition events. These rewards, incentives, participations boost morale and cultivate a culture of safety within our schools. By supporting this program, we are investing in our students' leadership. We are empowering our students to take leadership roles and develop valuable skills. We are also promoting a culture of safety. We are reinforcing the importance of safety awareness and creating a safer environment for all our students. We also recognize the dedication of their hard work and we acknowledge their exceptional commitment to our Safety Patrol.
And that was Ms. Sarah, and she's one of our paraprofessionals who leads our Safety Patrol, so I just wanted to give you a shout-out.
Being in safety control helps us feel proud, responsible, and like part of a team. We learn to pay attention, be safe, and support others.
It helps our school build stronger connections with each other and with our community. We're proud to model good behavior and promote We're proud to model good behavior and promote safety.
Here are some quotes, we forgot to put the intro. Here are some quotes from our students when we asked them about what they love about Safety Patrol.
I love helping kids get to their classrooms safely.
I like to help people and make people feel safe. That's why I joined.
When my mom told me about it, I thought it would be a good opportunity to help others and open the door.
I have to pay attention to everything around me and follow directions.
It makes me feel like I have a job and a purpose. I like helping people and meeting people. I like being a part of it.
All right, so we have a short video, so you can see them in action. So, one thing we've been working on this year is really making sure that they're supporting our cars to go all the way forward. They open the car door, and they are saying good morning to every family as they open the door. They also help students get out of the car. We've noticed that this supports people from parking in the no parking zone. And how could you be mad at a kid who's telling you to keep moving? So, it works out for everybody, so it's been a really great program this year. And that's it. So, you know, we really love our Safety Patrol at Monta Vista. I had it at my last school. We're kind of continuing to make it more and more an effective program. We're really excited to recruit our younger kids this year so that they could overlap with our fifth graders, so it could be getting started right in August. And, you know, we asked these students, anyone who wanted to come during their summer, to come present about it, and we have quite a bit of kids who wanted to come and share everything that they were doing. So, we're really proud of them, and thank you for letting us share about it, our students.
Thank you. Now, we'll have a time for a picture if the board.
I have a question. So, I got the Spanish one here. How early do the kids have to get there if they're on the Safety Patrol, every day?
I'm going to let Ms. Sarah answer that one.
I try to be flexible because some parents have more than one kid. I typically like them to be there at 7:50 so we can do a check-in. But I can, eight o'clock is safe, so we can still do a check-in. But I like to keep it as flexible between those ten minutes.
Eight twenty? So, these kids have to commit every day once they'd be on.
And they come in, actually, these, all of my kids lately have always, well, since I've started this, which will be my second year, every kid has come in ten minutes early. They're there before I get there. So, they really hold me accountable, and I really appreciate them for that.
That's quite a commitment.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Good job. We're staying here soon. Oh. Three, two, one. Thank you, Safety Patrol.
Good job.
Have a happy summer. Thank you for giving us a night.
A pencil so that during summer, you can keep up with your scholastic skills, lots of math problems.
And presenting for Tech High tonight is Jessica Romero.
Good evening. Board of trustees, members of the cabinet, staff and community members. I'm proud to share a bit about who we are at Technology High School. We're a small college prep public school of choice, serving around 345 students in grades nine through twelve. What makes Tech High unique is how we balance a rigorous STEM-focused curriculum with a deeply compassionate and connected community. We strive to empower students through real-world learning and strong relationships, helping them become thoughtful and engaged citizens. Academically, we offer fourteen advanced placement classes and are proud to be expanding our visual and performing arts program to give students more creative outlets. All of our students graduate with at least one career technical education pathway completed, ensuring that they leave us with both college and career readiness. Currently, we're offering engineering and architecture pathway, performing arts, design, media, and visual arts, and agriculture and natural sciences. This blend of high expectations and high support is at the heart of who we are. As we look at the future of Tech High, we remain committed to nurturing the whole student, academically, emotionally, and socially. One major area of focus is mental health. We've seen how important it is to make support visible and accessible. So, we're expanding social emotional learning work throughout our advisory program and strengthening peer support and adult-student connections with intention. I'm proud to share that we have secured a grant from Healthy Petaluma to open a wellness center on campus. Molly Nagel is working hard to start purchasing. She's having fun spending money to create a very welcoming environment for our students. We're anticipating that students will take advantage of this special space. We're also building on the success of campus-wide efforts like Wellness Week, which helps normalize conversations about mental health, while giving students tools to care for themselves and each other. Equally important is student engagement. We know that when students are involved, they thrive. So, we're working to ensure that every student finds a place where they feel connected. This includes growing participation in clubs, expanding leadership opportunities, and celebrating student voice through town halls, ASB, and cultural celebrations. Everything we do, from advisory to extracurriculars, is designed to ensure students feel seen, supported, and empowered to lead. Did that switch? Yeah, okay. At Tech High, leadership doesn't just come from the top. It lives in our students every day. We currently have over thirty active clubs on campus, and all of them are student-created and student-led. From robotics to GSA to Environmental Club and Dungeons and Dragons, our Club Rush event each fall helps connect students with their passions and their peers. Our field trips and events reflect both academic enrichment and community building.
Jessica, you went one slide too far.
Oh, thank you.
That's okay.
There we go. Okay, so, our field trips and events reflect both academic enrichment and community building. Students help plan and lead everything from curriculum-focused trips, town halls, grad trips, and career fairs. These opportunities let students take initiative and share what matters to them. A lot of what we do at Tech High is student-driven. It's them coming up with the ideas and saying, "How can we make this happen?" So, we do our best to support that. When it comes to leadership, it's everywhere. We have an outstanding ASB that plans spirit events, assemblies, and represents student voice. We also have students serving as peer mentors, club officers, and even speaking at district events and panels. Across all of these experiences, our students don't just participate, they shape the culture and community of our school. As a community that values continuous growth, we're proud to approach our challenges as opportunities to strengthen our school. First, we're seeing a clear and positive shift. More students are seeking mental health support and sharing when they need help. That tells us that they trust the adults around them. On the Youth Truth survey that students took in January of 2025, seventy-nine percent of our students answered that they agree or strongly agree with a statement, "When I'm feeling upset, stressed, or having problems, there is an adult in school who I can talk to about it." We greatly appreciate the additional counseling and mental health supports and resources from the district office and are excited to have both a mental health social worker and a school psychologist on campus two full days a week next year. We'll continue to build out peer supports and wellness activities that meet students where they are. With so many students involved in clubs and activities, we also face the exciting challenge of maximizing space for engagement. Our students want to lead, to collaborate, and create, and while our physical space is limited, we're being thoughtful about how we use it, from shared classrooms to flex spaces and keeping long-term improvements in mind. Finally, we're focused on supporting the wellness of both students and staff. We've seen, and we've been intentional about creating a culture that encourages balance, gratitude, and care. That includes celebrating each other's efforts, offering professional development focused on social emotional learning, and making sure both students and adults feel seen and supported. Each of these areas is a reflection of growth, energy, and deep care, and we're excited about the direction that we're headed. We're incredibly fortunate to partner with a wide variety of organizations to support our students and strengthen our school community. From our PTSA, which helps coordinate events and build parent engagement, to our School Site Council, which plays a key role in shaping our school plan, we benefit from strong parent and student collaboration. We also work closely with outside organizations like Upward Bound, which supports first-generation or low-income college-bound students, and SRJC, which provides our students with access to dual enrollment opportunities. Programs like CAPE we're bringing in next school year and CPI offer critical mental health and family support, while platforms like CaliforniaColleges.edu, which is taking over Naviance next year, will help students plan their futures. These partnerships reflect a shared commitment to our students' success, both in and beyond the classroom. So, as we reflect on where we are and where we're going, I'm filled with gratitude for the students, staff, and families that make Technology High School such a special place. Our commitment is definitely towards academic excellence, but it's also matched by our care for the whole student. We believe that when students are seen, heard, and supported, when they have opportunities to lead, create, and connect, they will rise to any challenge. We're proud of our progress and excited about what's ahead. A growing focus on mental health and wellness, a vibrant student life shaped by student voice, deep partnerships with families and community organizations, and continued commitment to innovation, equity, and belonging. I really appreciate your guys' support and believing in the potential of every student who walks through our doors. We're proud to serve this community, and we're just getting started, which is exciting for me. I'm just getting started, I should say. And to end tonight, we had a student named Lembert. He just graduated last week. And he spent weeks creating a documentary for his fellow graduating students or classmates. And it's about ten minutes, so I'm not going to share the whole thing with you, but I have about twenty seconds that I'm going to show you. And then Rochelle is going to send it out to your email so you can appreciate it as well. Is the sound already up?
We have amazing memories from that.
I remember all the projects we did freshman year. I loved it so much. Most of the projects were from Weaver's class, like our trebuchet, our marble sorting, and cardboard cars.
That transition from high school, from middle school to high school was the most perfect experience, I think, I could have asked for.
And it goes on for a long time, so I'll stop it there. But thank you, guys. I love being at Tech High.
When you get to high school, you form your own community.
Do you guys have any questions for me?
Questions? Nope. Thank you very much.
What is that acronym?
Which one?
VAPA.
Oh, VAPA, Visual and Performing Arts. So, we're going, we're definitely a STEM school, but we also have students, whether they realize it or not, could appreciate the arts, and a lot of them really need that to make themselves feel whole. So, this year, we offered photography class, digital film, a couple of art courses, and then, of course, things like a yearbook. And one of our teachers just got a CTE credential, and so two of those will be pathways.
I noticed at the graduation, you know, it seemed like the students were really supportive of each other. And how did, how did that get fostered so well in that, at the THS?
I wish I knew the answer. I wonder if it has to do with the age that they're at, right? So, they were coming to high school after COVID, right? So, they had spent their middle school years on screens, and so they really built those connections and came out like into adolescence and together as a cohort. They went through a lot together. I think that there's something about that small school environment that really nurtures that. And then, the staff has really been doing things intentionally to make sure they're building community, right? So, there's a lot of things throughout the year. ASB does a lot of it. But we're trying to create opportunities. Next year, we're going to have a couple of staff committees where one of them is completely focused on student engagement and morale, and the other one is going to be staff engagement and morale, because we're seeing like a need for both and all. I think something that's really special about Tech High is that it's a very small school with very few adults that run it, but we do almost the same amount of big activities, and there are so many fewer people to do it. So, how do we take care of ourselves? How do we identify what those things are so that we can show up for our students?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for the presentation. Trustee report, reports on activities, trustee Johnson.
Yes, I had the privilege of attending all of our high school graduations, and it's just, it makes my heart explode with joy to see these kids, these young adults, make their way.
Trustee Brown.
Same thing, and, you know, as Michelle says, you know, first for, for, for this board member, we had a first, our high school baseball team. First time since I've been, even before I was on the board, my kids were going here, our Rancho High School baseball team. One, is it the Northern?
NorCal Champions.
Yeah, the Northern California Champions, so quite the accomplishment. And then, I believe that one of the speakers at the ranch, he, he was on the baseball team, and he, you know, he said, he had a special shout-out to the baseball team. So, that was, and then they won the next day after that. So, that was, that was special. Special to see that.
Trustee Nelson.
Yeah, so I missed last session. I had the double whammy of surgery and being sick. But I was also able to go to the two main high school graduations, and also went to the John Reed promotion. So, that was, that was cool to see the fifth graders moving on up.
Trustee Wing.
I too went to all the high school graduations. I got to go to Lawrence Jones' promotion. So, it's always, I say it every single year, it's my privilege and honor to be on the board and see these students graduate and move on and do different things. So, I think I only cried through half of them this year. Next year, full, I'm crying through all of it next year. Andrew's graduating, and I haven't come to terms with that yet.
You still have a year.
I went as Michelle, not as trustee Wing, but I got to volunteer for Project Grad. And as I'm sure you all know, Project Grad needs all the help they can get to keep it going. And so, a huge shout-out to the team that put it on this year. I know they had a lot of challenges with getting volunteers, and there's never enough money and never enough time and all that kind of stuff. So, thank you to the Project Grad board and all of the parents and community members that volunteered to make it happen that night. I know the calendar for next year is out. It's really, really hard for Project Grad when we graduate on a Wednesday or Thursday. Just, I'm one of the people that had to work on Friday morning. I had a meeting at 9:00 AM, so I could not stay till, till 6:00 AM. So, thank you for the people that could stay. But it really, really makes it really hard for, for that organization for lots of reasons. So, I know they're doing things on their end to try to figure it out, but I just want to give them a shout-out because it's a really, it does the community and the students a really good service, and it's a really wholesome place for our students to be. And it's really cute watching them. Some of them actually recognize me. They're like, "Wait, you gave me my diploma a little bit ago." I'm like, "Mm-hmm." And then, some of them, I was like, "Based on your response to my question, I should take it back right now." But I know they were just excited, and it's just so much fun to watch them like in their element, and it's really great. So, if you're not. So if you're not doing anything next Wednesday of Janu-, of June 3rd, 2026, Project Grad could use all the help it can get, so.
Put it on your calendars now?
Put it on your calendars now.
We're graduating on Wednesday?
Next year's graduating on a Wednesday, yeah.
I know that made it difficult on Thursday.
Part of the volunteer thing is, is if it's on a Friday, it works much better.
Yep.
We'll be looking at that for the 27, 20, the 26, 27 calendar. I recognize the difficulty that presents, so.
And, you know, just, it's not only our high school. My wife is the county president of Project Grad, and all the schools have difficulty with volunteers. And I don't know what it is, it's just different parents aren't stepping up, or they're working and they're busy, but it's, it's such a crucial thing, because the end result is no fatalities that night through all the high schools, which is a huge thing.
And even if you can't do it that night, I mean, they need help with everything from stuffing envelopes to cutting up pieces of paper, all kinds of things. So if you are bored next May or June, reach out, they'll put you to work somehow.
It's a lot of work.
It is, yeah.
I was able to attend the Thomas Page Promotion and then the high school promotions. And during all of the ceremonies, I, I was reflecting on how each person in the district got the student to that place at that time, and just how awesome it is that so many people come together as a team to educate our students and prepare them for what's next. So thank you for each person who works at the district. Next up, Superintendent Report, Dr. Ituri.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So I too went, I made it to seven graduations in a little over 24 hours. It was awesome. I got to TPA, LJ, Elko, Rancho, Tech High, Montevista and TMS. All the elementary schools were at the same time. It makes it a little bit of a challenge, but all the cabinet members were able to attend, so we were represented at all the elementary school promotions as well. It's just an amazing time. That end of celebration, the end of the year celebration is just really heartwarming, and the kids are so excited, and the families are so proud. We ended our negotiations with Ripsia the last week of May. Really grateful to the Ripsia team, the bargaining team and our IBB process. I can't express that enough. I say it every time I see them, how happy I am that we are working together. We, we met with the city, Rona Park, Cotati, Sonoma State and the district, and it's called the Two by Two by Two Meeting. We talked to them about our budget. They would like to help advocate for budget equity, I guess, across, particularly for Rona Park and Cotati. So they want to, we provided them with some talking points, so when they have the opportunity to speak to their, not only their constituents, but their colleagues at a legislative level, that they have some things that they can advocate for us on. I was also able to go to the Electrician and Plumbers Union. John and I went and toured both facilities. That's amazing, what an amazing resource we have in this community. If you want to be a part of the Electricians Union or the Plumbers Union, they take students and they provide them with internships, and they're paid, and they train them for four years to become journeymen. So it was really exciting to understand that a little bit more and looking for places where we can collaborate. We had our luau, which was really well attended, a lot of fun, and we also had our ballet folklorico group perform, which was really lovely. We did some planning for our October safety event. On October 16th, we're going to do the big, the great shakeout, and we will also have two schools that will create the condition, two schools that will sustain more damage, and we will have to enact our EOC at the district office. So we'll work on what that looks like for us communicating with a school site that sustained damages and injuries. So we have TPA and UELF that'll be participating in that at a higher level. We will continue to add more schools to that, but we want to be successful, so we're going to start with just a couple. And we'll be working with Rona Park Public Safety, Cotati Police, Sonoma State and the fire departments in that event. Today, we did an EOC training to prepare for that. We brought in all our staff who's part of our Emergency Operations Center, and we worked out ways that we communicate. And it's much more complicated. You look at it on the, on the flow chart, you're like, oh yeah, this is all going to work, and then you actually start to do it, and you're like, oh, there's so many questions we need to have answered. So it was really good that we walked through that today. And last night, we had a little district office administration, or district office staff celebration to celebrate the end of the year. We have amazing, amazing people who work for us in all aspects of this organization, and I'm just very grateful to be a part of it. So thank you to all the staff, teachers classified for a really amazing year. So thank you all.
Okay, and there are no reports from our union team members. Item 7F, receipt of official correspondence.
Sorry, it's flipping.
Flipping the page. We do not have any official correspondence. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, item 8A, any questions, comments? Okay.
I thought we amended and pulled it.
So.
We're just going to vote on it, separate from the other items. Anything else we need to know about that? Okay. May I have a motion to approve 8A?
I'll make a motion to approve 8A.
Do we have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any abstained?
Abstained.
Okay. Okay, so motion carries four zero with one abstention. Thank you for your help with that. Okay, and any questions, comments about items 8B through 8AA? And may I have a motion to approve items 8B, excuse me, through 8AA?
I move.
In a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries five zero. And moving on to 11A, Resolution 2025 to 32, Resolution to Make Transfers Between Fund Balances and Expenditures at Close of Year Per EC 42601.
So this resolution allows the district to make transfers between, within a fund to cover any expenditures that need to, we need to make to close the, the year. So within the fund, and then the next one will be something different.
Any questions? Okay. May I have a motion to approve 11A, Resolution 2025 dash 32, Authorization to Make Transfers Between Fund Balances and Expenditures?
So moved.
In a second?
All second.
All in favor?
How about roll call?
Excuse me, it is roll call. I had that highlighted too.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Nelson?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
11B, Resolution 2025 dash 33, To Establish Temporary Interfund Transfers of Special or Restricted Funds Fund Money.
So the difference between this one and the previous one is that within, between funds, like we have the general fund, we have the, the food service fund, we have a special reserve fund, now we can make transfers within funds to cover any expenditure. We probably won't need to do it, but it covers our, covers, covers us to be able to do so if needed.
Okay. Any questions? May I have a motion to approve 11B, Resolution 2025 dash 33, To Establish Temporary Interfund Transfers of Special or Restricted Fund Monies?
I'll move.
In a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Nelson?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Item 12A will be a public hearing to solicit the recommendations and comments of the, of the public regarding a specific, excuse me, the specific actions and expenditures to be updated in the 2025 dash 2026 Local Control Accountability Plan. The floor is now open for public comment. Okay, no public comment. So item 12B, Dr. Fields and Ms. Amelia Circo.
Yeah, so every year, as part of the LCAP process, we provide a brief annual update to take a look at our goals, any changes that we're making to our goals, and to give, share a little bit with you all about our progress, any challenges we've had and how implementation is going. So Ms. Circo is going to give us a brief presentation, and if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Good evening. Good evening, Board President Martin, Fellow Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Ituri, Cabinet Members, Staff, Students and Community Members. My name is Amelia Circo, and it's my privilege tonight to present to you the annual review of the Local Control Accountability Plan, or otherwise known as the LCAP. The LCAP is our district's three-year strategic plan to help all students succeed, and tonight we will review the LCAP, and at next week's board meeting, it will be brought back to you for approval. The LCAP is California's key planning tool for school districts to set goals, plan actions and allocate resources to improve student outcomes. It ensures that our efforts are strategic, transparent and focused on the needs of all students. The LCAP Annual Review helps us measure progress, evaluate what is working and ensure resources are aligned to support all students' academic and social emotional success. It's a key step in maintaining transparency, accountability and continuous improvement. The CRPUSD Educational Partners includes families, staff, students and community members. We meet with them to gather input that guides our goals and ensures our plans reflect the needs of our school communities. For the 2425 school year, CRPUSD engaged in a comprehensive educational partner engagement process to gather input and from across our school communities. Feedback was collected through LCAP and DLEC meetings, through site-based input sessions, district-wide surveys, school forums and leadership meetings involving students, staff and administrators. These efforts ensured that a broad range of perspectives informed our planning and that educational partner voices played a central role in shaping our decisions. So let's take a look now at our annual review of our LCAP goals. Goal one focuses on improving instructional outcomes and closing achievement gaps so that all students receive a high-quality education. We've made strong progress aligning instructional strategies across the district, creating greater consistency for students. While our avid implementation shows promise, it does need some deeper support to be fully effective. In response, we're shifting to a site-specific professional development model for the 2025-26 school year to ensure training is more relevant, targeted and aligned to each school's unique needs. Goal two is about fostering a safe, welcoming environment that supports the social emotional wellbeing of both students and staff. A highlight this year was full participation from site leaders in the Restorative PBIS School Leadership Academy. However, the social emotional learning curriculum implementation across TK through eight remains inconsistent. So to strengthen our efforts, we're adding a Student Services Specialist position to enhance PBIS and restorative practices, provide behavior support and build positive strength-based relationships with families. Goal three focuses on engaging parents, families and community partners to support student success. This year, all sites successfully filled their community liaison positions, strengthening connections. However, survey data did show a slight decline in parent perceptions of their role in decision-making, especially among high school families. Despite this, no changes are planned to our current actions as we remain committed to deepening our educational partner engagement. Goal four aims to improve academic outcomes for our multilingual learners. Well, this year, instructional coaching effectively supported teachers in implementing strong language development practices. However, achievement gaps persist for our long-term English learners, highlighting the need for more focused and sustained interventions. We will continue with our current strategies to address these challenges for next year. These will be our anticipated dates for our upcoming school year's LCAP committee meetings. I know that some of you have been able to join us at some of them. I want to encourage everybody to be there, and your input and your insight would be greatly appreciated. With that being said, do you have any questions about the annual review for the Local Control Accountability Plan?
Oh, my do on the first slide. Where was that? On the modifications? Where was that on our goal one? Professional development? Oh, no, maybe it was on the second one.
Oh, here we go.
Yeah, on goal two, on goal two. I see that we are hiring some folks that are for behavioral support, so it's really good to see that, you know, we're actually putting things into place. So I just wanted to appreciate the, that effort.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So for goal two, my team and I have talked about this the last couple of weeks. So we, I think we do a decent job taking care of our students from August 13th, whatever the first day of school is, until the last day of school. And we have these, you know, we have the Stop It app, and we have ways that they can reach out if they need help. But come the last day of school until the first day of school, we don't have anything for them over the summer. So we're kind of training them to find this one trusted adult, and then we're training them to, here's how you handle things when you're in school, but during the summer, we don't have anything for them to do. And I know that we can't provide the same level of support year-round, but we do have summer school programs going on, we have students on campus in the YMCA programs, and then we have a year-round school that starts in July. So I, I personally would like to see us do something over the summer where not the same level of services, but if a student really, really needs help and we're training them, go to that one trusted adult and here's this, here's how you do it. It just seems kind of choppy where all of a sudden it's like, good luck in the summer, hope you come back okay in August. So I don't know how we do that or what that looks like, but it's, it's a little bit of a disconnect to me.
Thank you for that information.
So question about that. Great, great suggestion, just how is that funded?
It's, I feel like the school system has taken on all these outside responsibilities more than just the academic of two plus two equals four. And my concern is, is that we have some students out there that are really, really, really struggling. And we, if we don't necessarily have to engage families in the student struggle, if we're going to keep it at the school level, because for whatever reason, it's not safe at home to tell parents, or the student doesn't want the parent to know, or an outside guardian, I think it's irresponsible of us to say, good luck over the summer, I hope you make it. So if we're going to take the burden on during the school year of protecting these students, then I think letting them kind of fend for themselves over the summer is, is kind of rude. I don't know how we're going to fund it, I don't know what that looks like, but I do think it is a huge risk that we're taking on so much of the social emotional learning and then just saying, good luck.
Like a student help line or something like that?
I don't know what it looks like. I don't know if it's in conjunction with the county, I don't know if it's in conjunction with the city, I don't know if it's just something as simple as, but if a student's willing to pick up their, if we're training them to do, use the Stop It app if you're in great danger, and then they get an auto or email back saying, sorry, school's out for summer.
Does this program's like Mentor Me operate year-round? I know we work with them.
No, that's true.
I don't know about Mentor Me, but I was, I was listening to Michelle talk, and I've been thinking about this, and we've been having conversations with, about it at a district level on how would we staff Stop It during the summer? I was thinking about some of our partners like CPI. They off, they're, they're year-round. Are there ways that we can collaborate with them and find some ways that we, they can perhaps, I don't know yet, but it's, it's an opportunity to open up that conversation. I've actually been in conversation with Jason Carter, one of their program folks, about some things that they had offered in the summer in the past, and could that be expanded? Or are there other opportunities? So we're still in dialogue about it. We don't have a solution for it right now, but you bring up a really, really good point, that we have this out-of-office message that happens during the summer, and kids need help during the summer, often sometimes more than they need it during the school year.
Thank you for that. The thoughts. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for presenting.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, 12C will be a public hearing to solicit, to solicit the recommendations and comment of the public regarding the specific actions and expenditures to updated, be updated. comment of the public regarding the specific actions and expenditures to updated, be updated in the 2025-2026 preliminary budget. The floor is now open for public comment. Okay, no public comment, so we'll move to John Bartolome's presentation on the 2025-2026 preliminary budget.
John, is it green because there's so much money?
Greens are free.
It's wishful.
Oh, okay. I know it's not, it is a weird color, green, so.
It's the spring green, and then when there's the harvest, then it will be darker.
Okay, I like it. It's new leafs. New money. Yes, that's what it means, there's new money.
Only if you're printing it.
I love that you bring that up, and it is a point of conversation around the office about what color to use. I, of course, have an opinion. Molly and Nikki have many opinions about it, and I think it came down to what was available at the store, so, you know, I hope you like it. All right. Hello, everyone. I'm here to present the preliminary adopted budget for the district. First, I want to say thank you to everyone that helped put this together. This is a months-long process that, that we take on to produce this document for you today, and a lot of people involved in helping us do that. So a couple of slides that you see every year, but the, you know, the proposed budget is a key piece to the formula, is the Local Control Accountability Plan. The LCAP, as we just heard, requires reporting of goals and related expenditures that will align with the district's budget. Both the preliminary LCAP and the preliminary budget must be presented at a public hearing in a meeting prior to the adoption, and then you'll adopt the both plans at our next meeting next week, June 17. The budget contains the most updated information available, up to and including the governor's May revision proposal, which I'll, I'll give you some highlights about in this presentation. I just read today that the legislature decided on a budget, but they're not the only ones that have a final say on this, so there's still some negotiating that happens. And Maite just asked me the other day, when, when is the budget final? And I told her that the end of the month, end of June. So we're adopting a budget before we know what, you know, what we're going to see money-wise potentially. So not only is the governor just, not just one voice, but neither is legislature, and there's still some negotiating that needs to happen. So these next two slides are the process, the state budget process, and then the district budget process. Again, you've seen these before. Some themes for the governor's May revision, which I think a couple of you have heard me talk about, but there's just a lot of uncertainty, and a lot of it is around the federal policies and, and what, you know, what, how that's going to affect all the things. GDP, you know, everything that you can see here, California foreign trade, tourism, immigration, the budget. And the legislature agreed today that, you know, they're going to underappropriate the 25-26 budget by $1.3 million, which, you know, this is, we'll see how this actually pans out, but that could be about $200 per kid, which is, which is my calculations. And it's not in the formula, but so, you know, Proposition 98 is all of education funding, and, you know, what they don't put in the formula that's part of the guarantee could be one-time monies that we see for specific programs, like I'll, I'll show you in a minute. So other things that they talked about at the, with regards to the May revision were, you know, the big three sources of state revenue, personal income, corporation, and sales, and use taxes are going to be projected to be lower. This isn't good. Job growth has been downgraded due to a weaker labor market. Inflation is okay, but, you know, we'll, you know, my grocery bill's still high, I don't know about yours. And I have two kids not in the house, so. Just slower growth all around. GDP's pretty flat, a little negative, and, you know, none of these things are good indicators for a healthy budget, especially in the out-years from a state perspective. So the current administration's proposed 26 budget maintains Title I and Special Education funding, which is good news, but it's eliminating, potentially eliminating Title III and some other monies that we get. Again, we don't know anything at this point. There's no decisions that have been made, and/or budgets accepted or adopted. So, you know, we're just in this kind of, this limbo state, and I looked today, again, and it's on our reports here in front of us, but, you know, we receive about $2.9 million in the general fund budget. It's all restricted from the federal government, and then food service gets another $1.3 million. So we're, we're looking at just, you know, under, just over $4 million that the, from the federal government, most of which, I mean, if this, this slide remains true, Title I and Special Ed funding is probably half of that. So that's good. I mean, as good as it can be. So again, there's a lot of uncertainty. I know I keep saying that, but that's, that was the main message of the governor's budget. Proposition 98 and the education budget will really rely on healthy, a healthy California economy to strive. And you can, you can see the rest there. So before I get into the budget for next year, I just want to give you an update for the current year budget, 2425. All, all things after, you know, when I come back to you in September with the close, we'll be compared to these numbers, but we are projected to spend, deficit spending $2.6 million. I think I talked to you about this last month, but the local control funding was adjusted down due to the ADA, which, which didn't hit quite, we didn't hit our projections. So that's about a $260,000 difference. A lot of it's made up with the interest income that we're getting because, because we have some money in the bank and we're making some money on it. And then there's minor, minor adjustments in our expenditures that you can see, and they total to about $85,000. So 2.6 million, that's a little higher than what we were projecting before, but, you know, that's if we spend every dollar that we said, you know, I know I say that all the time, but that's if we spend every dollar that we projected to spend, and that's generally not the case. So not, not too much of a change on that front.
John, I'm, I'm reading this, and they're, he's using deferrals to lessen the fiscal impact, but it's still $4.3 billion less than January.
They're, they're accounting, they're definitely accounting tricks and things that the governor uses to, to make the budget look better.
I mean, if, if we see another $4.3 billion less in another six months, I mean.
Yeah. Proposition 98 is guaranteed, you know, that it's guaranteed the, the funding that...
But they're, they're deferring it so that...
That's a cash.
Yeah, if there's less money, then they aren't in more trouble.
The deferral, the June to July deferral is a cash, is a cash trick, so we're not going to get the money that we generally get in June until July. It's really a couple of weeks, so for, for us, it doesn't affect too much. But from, from state budget perspective, it's, it makes it look better. I can't really get into much more than that, but you're right. There, there are...
It's hiding how bad it is.
Yeah, it could potentially be.
I have a question about that, too, John. I know that earlier this year, we went to a presentation, and they were saying that the property taxes from the Palisades fire are being pushed out until September, so we should be getting some more revenue from that, the state?
Uh, I'm not sure if it's property taxes or the income tax.
Oh, it was the income tax. That's correct. Yeah, pushed out until September.
The problem is the property taxes are going to go down.
Income taxes are not due for LA County for, until September, like you said, so, you know, when they did that before, they missed the mark by quite a bit, and I, I hope they learned their lesson. I think that's the message, that whatever their projections are for, for the tax, tax, income, income tax income for this year, which aren't going to be received until September now, hopefully they didn't miss the mark like they did before. Good questions, though. Any, any other before I move on? Okay. So talking about the budget now, similar assumptions that we, we've used previously, the Department of Finance COLA funding assumptions, I'll talk more about that in a minute. Step and column movement across salary schedules of all 1.5%. The health and welfare increase of 7.5% in 25-26 is reflected, which is the, the increase to Kaiser, our Kaiser IV plan, which is the base plan that we currently in our contract, how we, how we measure, or what we base our health and welfare costs against. And then, you know, over the last 10 years, we have had a historic, historic average of 4% in increases, so I'm just going to keep going with that and, and make our budget look a little better potentially. Assume STIRS and PERS costs, and then our ADA, I'll get a little bit more into that in a second, but we are projecting increasing ADA percentages, or amounts, over the next three years, although it'd be a little bit, a small adjustments here and there. So 2.3% COLA for this next year is the COLA that is going to be applied to the Local Control Funding Formula, 3.02 and 3.42 for the two out-years, and we'll see changes to those, I'm sure. A nice, not surprised, but a nice recognition of the PERS employer rates going down for the first time in probably my whole career to 26.81. It's not a big, a big adjustment, but it's, but it, it went down, which is amazing, and it's going to, it's going to, it's projected to go up again in the next couple of years, but that's much lower than what we thought, you know, in any of our previous reports. And here's what really made me scared to push the button. I was, I was sharing with cabinet that, you know, I was really reluctant to push the button because you could see just over, since last year, how many more positions we've added to our staff. You know, we've gone from 359 FTE of RIPSIA positions to 381 in this budget, 121 to 161 in SEIU staff, and it, you know, non-representative or admin hasn't increased that much, and CSCA has a small amount, but that was really making me not want to push the button, as I keep saying. This is a new slide potentially for you guys to see, but I, I wanted to show, you know, how I'm getting to the ADA projections that I'm looking at. It's by site, so you could see to, starting from the left, each school site is listed, what their enrollment was for this year, what the projected enrollment is for next year, and the difference, their prior ADA by site, and then their projected ADA. So I highlighted the ones in red just because Maite and I want to focus on those sites to hopefully improve or get to the number that we're projecting for them ADA percentage-wise next year, and then how that calculates out to, sorry?
Is Evergreen and Montevista down just because we've moved the SDC classes somewhere else?
That is correct, yeah.
Thanks. Yep.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Hi, Maya. So you can see how that projects out by grade span, and then what our ADA will be for our site ADA. And I'm projecting, you know, we, we did finish at a 93.51% ADA percentage this year. Again, it didn't hit the mark that we were hoping, but that's where we're going to start, and that's, I think it's achievable based on how we have this laid out. Any questions about this?
Is the ADA weighted, like, so the 62% at El Camino, is it weighted just the same as the 92% at Rancho Cattati?
Yeah.
So it doesn't matter that there's a lot less students there?
Well, from a percent, yeah, I'm sorry, weighted.
So...
I thought you were going from a funding standpoint, but no.
No, so do they just take the percentage of all of these in average amount, or is it total enrollment times total attendance?
Correct.
Okay, so it doesn't matter that El Camino is skewed a lot?
It's a big drop there, but it's not.
Yeah, okay.
Good question, though. So just as a reminder, the, for the Local Control Funding Formula, we have our base grants provided by grade span or grades. You can see TK3, 46, 78, 912, different amounts for each one of those grade spans. A 2.3% COLA is added to that, and then we get some grade span adjustments for TK3 grade and 912 because we, the state thinks that it takes a little bit more money to educate those kids. And then we get supplemental, we get supplemental grant funding currently. We're projected to hit the 95, well, I'm projecting that we're going to hit the 95% three-year average for concentration funding, just barely, in '26-'27, so we'll see a little bit more funding for that. These are the, excuse me, funding amounts per, per grade span. You can see at the bottom there, and I just want to make note of this, that it's, the TK add-on is what, this is a bigger number than $2,397 more than what it is, was projected to be, and that was to the governor's proposal to help with the 10 to 1 kid to adult ratio. But again, we don't know if that's, that's going to come to fruition, so I only booked half of the increase, just to be on the safe side. So 43, 46 is what I booked per ADA for every TK student that we, we get. So this, this shows the calculation of how we get to $81.6 million in LCFF revenue. And you can see that here, we have about $106 million across the general fund, both restricted and unrestricted, and we're going to spend $110 million, almost $111. Two million of that, 2.2 million of that is the spending down of the one-time monies, and the rest would be ending balance or carryover balance from some of the other restricted funds, but because we are deficit spending $846,000 after I push the button for unrestricted, our unrestricted general fund, which I was actually kind of relieved at because that wasn't as bad as I thought it could be. Again, we, we did make the potential, I think it's still a conservative number, but we did take a sort of a big swing at the enrollment, not, you know, from, I didn't change it too much from what we actually have enrolled at the current, at this current time, but, you know, we, we did have some TK classes that weren't full yet that we're assuming are going to be before the school year starts and that kind of thing. So again, on the restricted side of the budget, we are deficit spending $2.7 million. 2.2 of that is the one-time monies, which will fall off at the end of '25-'26. Leaves us with a 5% reserve. I always like to include this because a 5% reserve is not what the average unified school district... the average unified school district in the state of California holds in their budget. Uh, it's more like 24% for most, uh, on average for most districts, uh, our size. So, again, I actually changed this slide, but it says the same thing. Uh, multi-year projections are the result of mathematical calculations for future years based on the following. Industry standard economic assumptions, which I've talked about, locally calculated data point estimates, which I've talked about, and decisions that have already been made, which you have made previously. They're not predictions or forecasts, they're not crystal balls, and they're not measuring sticks for wrongness because I will be wrong if you compare these to anything that I do in the future. And it's always because the information changes, right? All right, so we're gonna deficit spend 846, as you saw. 300, just under $400,026, '27, and then we'll have a slight, uh, re, uh, surplus in '27, '28. And again, maybe I didn't say it earlier, but the, the enrollment number that I projected for next year is us bursting at the seams pretty much. So, I don't, I'm not projecting any more, uh, enrollment gains, and it's that, that, by '26, '27 is what our previously reported, um, demographic report showed that we were gonna flatten out, we were gonna flatten out at some point. So, um, that's where we are. So, enrollment and ADA trends are always a financial concern because it matters that our kids show up to school. We're gonna, we're gonna put more effort in, again, more effort into that. Um, and then, future impact of STIRS and PERS, um, that's starting to level out. You know, there's no projection that the STIRS, um, employer contribution is going to increase, which is good. Uh, but we are seeing increases in our general cost of doing business. Um, and already, you know, since I pushed the button, I know that we, we've had to add a couple more positions here and there, so, I mean, we're not, we're already looking at a bigger deficit than what I'm showing. Um, and the expiring one-time funds after next year, if we don't get any ones to replace it, we'll, we'll definitely see some, uh, positions that are affected by it. So, at this point, thankfully, we, uh, you know, this isn't a certification time. The first, uh, first actual certification doesn't happen until December, but if we were, we would be able to, we could show that we can pay our bills and keep our 3% reserve for the, for the current year, current budget year and two years out. So, that's also good news. Any questions?
I wanted, I do have a question, but before that, I wanted to say, I remember months ago when we're looking at a different number for, uh, deficit spending.
Yeah.
So, the new number, I like it much better.
Yeah, it's, it's, based on, again, based on what, as this was coming together.
What was that?
As this was coming together, it was scaring me more and more because, you know, we've added quite a few positions because of our growing, uh, enrollment, both in general ed and special ed, and, um, and the movements that we've had to make to even out SDC classes and adding TK classes because of the different ratio. I mean, I was, I was getting very nervous, so, uh, I am, I, thank you, I appreciate that.
Uh, my questions are regarding our, our funding. I didn't make the last budget advisory meeting, I apologize for that, but I looked at the notes, and it said that we're the fourth lowest-paid district in the state.
Oh, yeah.
And you may have answered my question at that time, so I apologize if it's duplicate, but I'm just curious why, and then I'm also wondering, is there any funding that we're missing?
Yeah, it's hard to, you know, it's not that hard to answer. I, I, I think there are a lot of districts, there, you know, 10% of the districts in, in the, in the county of Sonoma are basic aid districts, which means, you know, they're, they're already getting more than what they're entitled to via the Local Control Funding Formula because of their property taxes. They get to keep the excess, right? Um, and then beyond that, uh, some of the higher-funded per-student districts are heavily into supplemental concentration funding. Uh, they're like, the highest one, which is Roseland, right?
Yeah, Roseland.
Roseland has, is almost 100% unduplicated pupil count. It's like 97% or some outrageous number. So, you think of that, they're getting 100% of, almost 100% of this, you know, the supplemental concentration funding, that could be, you know, $6,000 more per kid, right? And then, uh, districts like Sonoma, I always bring this up, where I, uh, I previously worked, our Ed Foundation, or, uh, the Ed Foundation in this, in Sonoma raises almost $2 million that goes to the, goes to the district to help run programs that they wouldn't otherwise be able to run. And that's, you know, 2,000, $2 million divided by, you know, 3,000 kids in that district is a lot more money per kid, so. Stuff like that, I mean, that, that's what, that's, you know, we're kind of in this weird place, you know? Just recent, just until recently, we were hovering around 50% um, unduplicated pupil count, which just barely got us any supplemental funding. Fact that we're at 55% right now, you know, that, that means we're getting half of the, that 20% number there. Um, so, I mean, I think those are, those are kind of the, anything you wanna add to that? Like, any?
No, I think it, I think, you know, John covered most of it. It's that additional money that the community comes up with. It's the, not, us not having concentration supplemental has been probably, has hurt us the most because we do have kids who are in need, and we have school sites that exceed that 55%. But as a district as a whole, prior to last year, income verification forms weren't being turned in, and this year, we made a really concerted effort to make that happen, which we're doing again next year. So, we need to maintain that 55% because I think then that will make a difference in what we're able to, what we're able to do. I mean, Petaluma is about $1,000 or $2,000 above us per, per student, and they can do a lot. I mean, that's a significant sum that they can do a lot more with. Um, so, it's, it is, it's, that's, there's no equity in that, right? We have, we are educating students as well, there should, that, that's the flaw of LCFF.
So, I have a question about the Ed Foundation and, and grant money. So, we have an Ed Foundation in Cattati Runaway Park, but I believe the Ed Foundation is giving grants directly to the teachers, so not to the district. So is that the difference, is that Sonoma, Valley, they're giving to the district?
Their donation does run through our district's book, so it is accounted for in, in the, you know, potential.
So it is showing up in our budget, it's just not as great as some of the other districts?
Right.
Okay. And then when we get grants?
Same.
It is running through the, okay, so it's all showing in there, it's just not as great as?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And then that money is often, right, that money comes with a specific target.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a pass-through, right?
Yeah.
But it is in there, so it's not like, it's this budget plus a million dollars of the Ed Foundation gives the teachers directly, so.
The comparison is all revenue sources in the general fund versus, I mean, what, whatever your ADA is or enrollment is, is how we get to the.
Like, so for, some of our programs in the district have a high percentage of students that are coming from out of district. And I know that that helps our enrollment number because they're coming from out of district, so it's helping our enrollment. Does it, you, you could make the argument that if you're coming from out of district, you probably aren't getting, you probably aren't qualifying for concentration funds? And so is that kind of hurting us that we're inflating a number of students in certain programs, and it's at the disadvantage of some of these other programs?
It could.
If you didn't have the ADA, that would hurt you more.
It's, right, it's the math, it's, it's math at that point. The higher, the higher number of enrollment that you have, and if you're getting enrollment from outside your district, then you...
Yeah, if we're talking like the 150, 170 students at Tech High out of 6,200, so that's...
So, so you lower the, the income levels, and you get higher money there, but if you lose 170 students?
Yeah.
Times 16,000 a student?
Right.
That's a huge hit. So basically, to do that, you have to lay off positions, teaching positions?
Right.
And other, you know, for that. So, there's no easy answer. Um, and it's, and, and it's, funding is very inequitable. You have, you have Ed Foundations where my kids live in the Bay Area that are giving millions and millions of dollars versus, you know, it's just income, you know, inequities. So, you know, the big question in, in, in my mind is, where is the economy going? And what, and I'm sure you have the same question, is, when do we hear? The end of June or the end of July from the state?
Uh, the, the, the state budget will be adopted, you know, it's generally adopted by the end of the month of June, or, or they don't get paid, so.
And then, you know, we talk about deferrals. So, I mean, the, what I'm seeing, you know, because I'm in the construction business and stuff like that, is it doesn't look very promising?
Yeah.
Um, for, for income for the state, so. And then, two, I don't know if we really know what's coming from Washington or not, do we?
There's a lot of uncertainty.
So there's, there's a bunch of unknowns, and so it's, and your job's difficult and, and make our job difficult for planning without some type of, you know, knowing what your paycheck's gonna be. In this case, you don't know what your paycheck's gonna be, so. Hold on. I mean, hold on to everything. Something, something's breaking. But, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, John.
You.
Thanks, John.
Eric, can we take a little break?
Sure. We will take a break?
Two minutes.
And be back in two minutes.